I'd like to say good afternoon, good evening really, I'm sorry, to everyone. And welcome to the Columbus Municipal School District's Regular Board Meeting. Today is April the 11th. And what we're doing here today is, it's momentum to me. Because there's gonna be so many different changes that will be coming down through the channels in our district. But first of all, I'd like to, as always, just say thank you. And congratulations to all of our students and our staff for the numerous, numerous accomplishments that they've made throughout this school year since January. So if we could just give them a little clap, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. Now we're moving, now I'll say that this board meeting is officially called to order. We do have a quorum present, we do have Mrs. Talisa Young with us. We have Dr. Schumake and myself at this time. Mr. Fred Sparks is en route. He is en route. So now we have the invocation by Dr. Joe Schumake, please.
Please pray with me. Gracious Heavenly Father, have mercy on us, we are sinners. We ask for guidance, but our unstated prayer is for you to tell us that we were right all along. We pray for understanding, but more often we want assurance that we understand, and those who disagree with us do not. We pray for new insights, but in truth, we want to know that we can stay just the way we are. We know we need to change and grow, but both ideas frighten us, and we truly want to remain as we are. Even at this moment, as we come blundering into your presence with prayer, we are haunted by memories of duties unperformed, promptings unheeded, beckonings ignored, and opportunities missed. When we pray, give us the strength to listen and move toward you and with you. Make us ever mindful and worthy of our responsibilities and of the trust which the community has placed in us. Give us the grace to put away ourselves and purify our intentions that we may be fit for your service. Have mercy on us. Set us free to serve with love and compassion through Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Ghost, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Now we're moving to item two. Item three, I'm sorry. Item three, the swearing-in of our newly-appointed school board member by Mayor Keith Gaskin. I'd like to welcome Dr. Cynthia Studd and her family here tonight. And Dr. Studd, it is a pleasure to serve with you. One of the most critical public links in public education is the school board. And with us being educators, I'm sure we both can allude to that. We, the school board, we educate who? Our students, our kids. Education may not be on our agenda, but it is a line item, and it's the focus of why we meet here tonight. We are accountable for the performances of our kids. And with that, I'll yield to Doc... Mayor Gaskin. We have so many doctors in the house these days. I think it's right, right.
This is my deceit, honor, to be here to swear Dr. Brown in tonight. We've said this before from the council meetings, that there's probably no more important appointment that we can make as a mayor and city council than a member of the school board. Children of this community should be and are our top priority. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to help this school district be as successful as possible. And I can't think of a higher honor than, for me, for the first time, to be able to swear in a new school board member than it be you. So thank you for this honor. Now we'll let your husband stand here, and you can place your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. There you go. I, Cynthia Stewart Brown...
I, Cynthia Stewart Brown...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully support...
That I will faithfully support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi...
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi...
And obey the laws thereof...
And obey the laws thereof...
That I am not disqualified...
That I am not disqualified...
From holding the office...
From holding the office...
Of board member...
Of board member...
Of the Board of Trustees...
Of the Board of Trustees...
Of Columbus Municipal School District...
Of Columbus Municipal School District...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter...
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, come on up. Okay, right over, right, I believe. Where is it? Oh, that's true, don't do like I do. Make sure she's set up, is her computer on? Okay, we can go on and get started. We're at item number four, adoption of the agenda policy BBB, policy BCBD. I'm also requesting an amendment to be added while we are adopting our agenda to amend item 8B3. That's 8B3. So it becomes rule number five. 8B3. To number five. Move it up, right before... Yes ma'am. Requesting a motion for approval. So the motion has been made by Mrs. Talisa Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, is there any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, requesting a motion. So now we will have item five, to amend the item that's amended. And this will be discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery Review. Mr. Taylor Gill, please. You're welcome. How you doing? Came a lot faster than you thought.
Thank you. I'm doing well. Unfortunately, I don't have good news tonight, I don't know how else to put it. We had a FEMA phone call. Last time we spoke, we'd been meeting, I guess, had conferences with FEMA, I guess, once a month, Dr. Dito. We had one in March before the last board meeting, we had one set up for March 9th, which was last Thursday. The documentation was going through FEMA's historical review, we got through that, went through the insurance review. And then they sent a 75-page document for Dr. Dito to sign, I guess about two weeks ago, Dr. Dito? There are three pots of money, if you say, so to speak, it's three pots of money. One is for the insured portion of the Hunt School, which is a two-story original classroom building with a gymnasium cafeteria. That's for one pot of money, because that was insured. And so FEMA would deduct insurance proceeds from that. The other pot of money is for the Hunt Museum that wasn't insured. And FEMA is obligated to pay 75% of that cost, and MEMA will pay 12.5% of the cost of a Hunt Museum. And the third pot of money is the hazard mitigation, which is all new windows and doors for the Hunt School. Every, you know, that annexed building is almost all windows, it's a huge, it's a huge big piece of the project there. So we got the documents, are reviewing it. What FEMA had done, I don't know how else to put it, FEMA for the, for the original two-story building, gymnasium cafeteria, that part of it. FEMA had used the insurance company's estimate. In their report, they wrote that the building had a pungent, strong, musty odor. They didn't go inside of it. They did a tabletop inspection, I'm not sure, Ms. Cox, what a tabletop inspection is, but they didn't go in the building. And they used insurance companies' low-ball, I don't know how else to put it, but their estimate, you know, which wasn't adequate in scope or price. And then, so they used that estimate, and then they estimated the cost to repair it the same as the estimate. So FEMA's, what they were proposing, as far as their portion of that part was zero. We had calculated, actually, their part to be, bear with me, I got these numbers here. We actually had calculated FEMA's part to be about 6.8 million. And they came, they just have ignored all our documentation, all our bid results, all the spreadsheets, all the scope. And they just use insurance company's estimate, so that's one pot. The other pot of money is the Hunt Museum. Again, the competitive bid prices we had, that we identified the Hunt portion, we had, that we, first, we re-roofed it, we removed that, it's best a separate project, and then we had the bids to repair it. And that cost, that total cost to do that was a million, 1,466,000. With FEMA's portion of that being a million 61,000, a little bit over a million dollars. But FEMA came back in their estimates, I think they actually had gotten the insurance company's estimator to estimate it for them. They came back with their estimate of 193,000, and they would fund 75%, so 144,000, 145,000. So instead of the million dollars, that's the actual cost on competitive bids, they were saying, we'll fund 145,000. The third pot of money is the hazard mitigation. The early estimates of that were about a million nine. The actual cost was 2.5 million. Instead of funding, what we calculated is a million nine, they're gonna fund a million four, so at least that's closer. If you add all those three pots of money up, Ms. Cox, we had, we had calculated FEMA would owe the school district 9.8 million. FEMA's come back with about 1.59, almost 1.6 million, so that's the difference. It wasn't a very pleasant phone call, I hope Dr. Dito, I hope I wasn't out of line, Holly. I got pretty passionate. And just out of the blue, how could they use our insurance estimates that we've been fighting in federal court for two years as their basis of the cost to repair, not the actual bid results? FEMA agreed to send it back down the chain. I'm not sure exactly, Dr. Dito, I know you'd ask for a timeframe. Well, unfortunately, I, we're going backwards at this point. I don't know what else to say. It's going back to the chain, they'll go back and review it, I don't know, Ms. Rogers, they give a timeline at all? So it's going back to the original department, I guess, or division that estimated that. Once it comes back, we can appeal it, we have two rounds of appeals. And then the last party is a federal arbitration in DC. We've been through this process many times, Ms. Cox, we're not gonna roll over. In my mind, we're due the full 9.8 millions, we were able to document it, we were very meticulous, dotted our i's, crossed our t's. Anything in the cost to repair that school was either code upgrade or actual repair costs. So we are ready to fight them, and, or work with them, hopefully work with them. But we do have two rounds of appeals. And then if we're not satisfied with the appeals, we can do arbitration. After Hurricane Katrina, we arbitrated three, three different times. One was Dr. LaBott with the Bay Waveman School District. Actually, two, two of the three arbitrations was with, was with the Bay Waveman School District. Both times, we won. With the Bay Waveman School District, the third time, we won with the Gulf Coast Community College. I think, there's no doubt in my mind, we will win in the end. It's just gonna be, it's gonna be a tough fight, I don't know, Dr. Dito, you want anything to that, or? But I am gonna reach out to MEMA, you know, MEMA is our partner with FEMA. And I'm gonna reach out to Ms. Cox, she's gonna be out this week, but I'm gonna reach out to MEMA to get their help. And also, reach out to anybody we can to try to get, get help with FEMA to go back and do it. We've got the scope documents, it's frustrating that they've had the scope, the documents uploaded into the FEMA portal since about May of last year, and now we're April. So for a year, they've had those documents. We took bids, Holly, was it June, July, we took bids? Yeah, so we took bids, I think, back in July, and so FEMA, FEMA immediately had those bid results. We have been so transparent, we've put everything in that portal. I've done spreadsheet after spreadsheet showing the cost, broken things down, coded upgrades. I did extensive code upgrades for all the building codes, ADA codes, as for additional cost concerns, and all that was just ignored. Basically, they took the insurance estimates, said, here's what the cost is, here's what insurance gave you, we're gonna give you zero, so we're gonna fight it.
Well, I do. I feel like we're going, we're back to where we started from a while ago, years ago. And I'm just one board member, but I think it's time for us now to come together at the roundtable with each other. Because, and board, please comment, we've been going through this and the litigation, and waiting on FEMA, and meeting with MEMA and FEMA. And the board has been very, very, you know, patient.
Yes ma'am.
And our community is ready for something. And is not, I feel like, at this time, board, I'm thinking that we maybe need to consider a special call meeting where we really sit down and get a genuine understanding as to where we are with the total rebuild of Hunt. Look back through everything that we planned and make a decision as to where we're gonna move forward. and make a decision as to where we're going to move forward or not with everything that we've included in the total Hunt project. The total Hunt project costs a certain amount of money, okay? We need to look at Hunt, see what we can use. Look at our decisions for that to see where we can move forward with it.
I agree.
Because sometimes you may be trying to build a mansion and from, and you had a $200,000 house. And I'm not saying Hunt was just $200,000, because to me, Hunt has sentimental values down to the extreme. When I first came here in 1992, and I didn't teach there, but I worked there for many years, in and out of that building. And I would, it is my aspiration that is restored, to be Hunt again. Board members, how do you all feel about a special call meeting? A time for us to come together? If we are all together, there would be a special call meeting, Mr. Himpel?
Makes sense to me, given this unfortunate turn of events.
Yeah, I will agree. It has, of course, been a long time. We're still, you know, waiting patiently, and we understand it's no fault of yours. We just, you know, need to look at some other things and where we need to go from here. Or if, you know, if that's even an option.
Dr. LaBott, do you have any comments?
I have nothing.
Did we have, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, did, did we have any inkling that this was coming, or is this all bolted out of the blue?
No, I have been providing, you know, make sure, everything we've done today, all the documents, the drawings, the plans, specifications, the bid results. I've done spreadsheets. We had like, how was it, like 15 alternates? So we made sure that we had captured just the repair costs, nothing in addition, like I said, nothing that was the cost to renovate the annex into the adult education wing. All that was captured separately. Costs for the kitchen, some upgrades there, and things that insurance admits. We made sure, and all those things were documented. I had a very detailed narrative of each of the base bid and each alternate. Detailed estimate, detailed narrative of all the code upgrades. And spreadsheet upon spreadsheet of the cost and who was responsible for the cost. And at the end of the day, FEMA just ignored those. I mean, basically, you know, took the insurance settlement from, from three years ago and said, hey, we're going to use this. And that had no idea at all. I was just, I was hoping to see FEMA had used the actual numbers and get a document we could sign and go ahead, at the board meeting tonight, say, hey, FEMA's going to fund this, and let's go ahead, award a contract and move forward. It was just out of blue, Dr. Dito. It was just, I couldn't believe it when I read it. I just started shaking. I was just so, you know, so upset about it. That, and so it's, it's, it's just, you know, after we got through the insurance company and that long process, and then had to go through archives and history and got the windows approved finally, it's like, okay, now the last step is FEMA. And now it's going to be another battle, just like it was with the first two.
Thank you for everything you've done. It sounds like
Oh, yeah.
Everything they needed to, and they just ignored it.
But I do think it'd be good, you know, to, so the Board can see, you know, the spreadsheets, the costs, to actually get a handle on all the different items in there.
So we can decide where we're going.
Right, exactly.
Because during a board meeting, it's going to take more time.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's too detailed to just discuss overall and move forward to the next items.
And what we got to keep in mind is, I don't think FEMA took into consideration the increased cost over the year. With COVID and, and all the things that's going on now, I don't think they took that into consideration. And that was one of the things that we did bring up in our meeting. That was one of the things we constantly brought up in our meetings with FEMA, that they need to look at what's going to happen as far as increased cost now. You can't go back and build, just like you were saying, that $200,000 house. Right now, you would have to spend about $500,000 to fix it. So that's, that's the thing that we're fussing about and we're arguing about, is the fact that they didn't take that into consideration.
Yeah, and another thing are the code upgrades, you know. We had to build back to current code, and FEMA will fund the code upgrades. And I had captured those costs. I think those costs were about six, seven million dollars, the code upgrades. The fire protection, the electrical, all those things there, and FEMA just ignored them. They just used estimate that was done, basically, three, three, back in March of 2019, I guess, three years ago. Right after the storm. And just, just didn't, you know, I was just really disappointed to get to this point and think FEMA's going to be on our side, and it just, they just ignored it all.
You never can tell. When will you meet with them again?
I'm going to reach out to MEMA. I can't remember the last email from Trish, Dr. Dito, Holly, if you copied on it. Trish said something about-
I think it was that, that Thursday, that same Thursday, right after the meeting, but she didn't say what date we would be able to meet back. We just have to touch bases back with her to see where they are.
What I'll do is, I'll reach out to MEMA this week and let Dr. Dito and Dr. LaBott know anything that MEMA can share as far as timelines or expected, so we can, when we do meet, a special call meeting, we'll have a little more information, Ms. Cox.
So this, yes, ma'am. Ms. Young?
Mr. Taylor, is this typical of FEMA to do something?
No, what's typical, usually they'll use the most current information, you know, usually, I mean, we've been, we've built dozens of new schools. After Katrina and repairs and everything else, the natural disasters. And, and they'll always go back, and once you take actual bids, they'll go back and update their numbers. I was extremely shocked that they didn't go back and, and update the numbers based on the actual cost. And, and, you know, a lot of times, too, during the disaster, we had more of a sit-down, person to person. I think we've had with FEMA, we've had, what, three, four Zoom calls, Dr. Dito? Every time we have a Zoom call, it's not one-on-one, it's somebody from insurance, somebody from mitigation, somebody from historical. It's like, I don't have any people, I can't keep track of everybody that's on there. So it's not a one-on-one, sit-down, like a workshop you would have, and go through the drawing, the scope, and bids, and, and, you know, kind of back and forth and get on the same page. So with COVID, it's been hard to do that, so.
Taylor, isn't FEMA part of Homeland Security?
Yes, they are, it's underneath Homeland Security.
And don't we have a local congressman, Mississippi congressman, that is chair of the Homeland Security Committee?
Yes, yes.
I think it may be time somebody gets called.
I think, I think we've, 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 we've doing that.
Great minds think alike. Well, I did, I've seen that happen very recently, where there was something, and someone very powerful got things changed very quickly. Ms. Cox, from a legal perspective, I know the Board has to make a decision, but I think we've got, this is, this is actually, this is the first time, you know, Taylor can talk about it tonight, but like you said, for them not to use current, actual bid numbers is just almost beyond belief that they didn't do something like that.
And then wanted Dr. Dito to sign it immediately.
And we have, we have firm bids, you know, based on current construction cost of what this cost. So it, you know, my, of course, y'all get to make the decision, but legal opinion that we need to at least pursue that first, First Avenue before we fold in and start cutting costs.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I wasn't speaking of cutting costs. But I'm, but what I'm speaking of is us coming together and sitting down and discussing it, meaning that we have a new board member also. We need to all come together so that all of us are on the same page as to what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to update as far as plans and, and the cost and everything, so.
So that's, you know, it should only take maybe, you know, whenever it's, I know you have a busy schedule, like us all of us.
Whenever y'all, whatever convenience for y'all, Ms. Cox, you know, I'll be here.
Board members, is there any time that's particularly convenient for you? During the month, or, well, it's April, it's almost gone, isn't it?
Should, should we not wait until we have a little more information?
Let me reach out to MEMA this week, and I'll email Dr. LaBott and let her know, and suggest a couple of things. Yeah, yeah, but I would like to do it before next, next, next month's board meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay, before next month's board meeting? Yes, sir. Please do.
Yeah, I'll push it. I'm not going to wait.
All right, you're going to contact NEMA, and Dr. LaBott will let the Board know. Will notify the Board. All right. Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any other questions? Thank you very much. Please write carefully. Boy, Mr. Gill has been doing a tremendous job working along with Dr. Dito. And through this process, with them informing the Board of everything, and we are very appreciative. And it may be just a little disheartening right now, you know, just finding this out, because I think we had our hopes in that this was the month that we were going to, you know, start everything. And it seems like we're back to, what'd they say, the drawing board? You know, but we do appreciate you. We really do. We appreciate what you do. I'm going to take a deep breath and move on. At this time, I'm requesting a motion to move to, for close determination. Oh, I'm sorry. You sure did. Excuse me. Oh, that gave me a flip right there, Ms. Rogers. It is, it is. So we'll move down to this. Requesting a motion to make the quarterly interest transfers to fund 1121. Requesting a motion.
So moved.
Yes, ma'am? 1122. I read it wrong. It's 1122. To transfer, let me repeat that again. I'm requesting a motion to make quarterly interest transfers, to make this transfer to fund 1122. And that is $18,061.31. Requesting a motion.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. I think he threw me off, boy. Whoa. I think when he was coming early on, I thought he was ready to give us some great, great news. That's all right. Now we are requesting a motion to, for a close determination for executive session, policy BCBK. So moved. The motion is made by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. We are now in discussion for executive session. I think I think...
Okay. We really do. Now, we're moving on to, um, item four. It may not be four. The, uh, sir. Contract renewal update. Board, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to, uh, look at the list. Do you have any questions or comments about the contract? CMSD contract list right now. Moving on to item five. Consideration and discussion to approve the board members to attend the Mississippi School Board Association's basic course for the, our new school board, uh, member. Requesting a motion to approve item five.
So moved.
The motion is made by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item six. Consideration and a discussion to approve board members to attend the Southern Regional Leadership Conference in, uh, New Orleans, Louisiana. That's July the twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. Requesting a motion for approval. Some move. The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
Second is by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Goal updates. Policy BA. The student attendant report, goal one. Board, do you have any questions or comments regarding student attendance report? School safety report, goal four. I'm sure you all had a chance to look at the, uh, the charts that's provided, the graphs that's provided for us for the Columbus High School, Middle School, Cook, Fairview, Franklin, Cell, and Stokes. Any comments, questions regarding these reports?
Just...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, um, y'all help me. In the past, did we get a cumulative, um, report on the district as a whole?
Yes, we did.
Would it be possible to do that again? Cumulative report. I would. I mean, that would be helpful if possible.
Okay. Uh, when would you, uh, like this report to, to begin, Dr. Shumay?
Oh, well, next board meeting's fine.
The next board meeting? That would be the May board meeting.
Yeah.
Moving on to number three. Dropout report, goal one. Do you have any, uh, questions, comments, board, for dropout report? Goal one. Safety report. Number of accidents in the school, goal four. Any questions or comments? Now, we're moving on to our superintendent updates and reports. Dr. Cherie Labach.
Okay, um, certainly, your presentation. Uh, Ms. Murray, you have any of the PowerPoint, if you could, uh, tell us really quickly. Thank you. This could all be chart information that I've given you over the last two years on the qualitative and quantitative data for the district and a power point for chart. If you have any understanding, problem, understanding, comprehension, and Ms. Murray can leave with you individually and go over this data. But it all it is, is everything I've given you in chart form, and that's the request. This is our vision and vision as, as, uh, senior planning sessions in February. These are our goals, which is the drive, which is our data-driven decision to increase student achievement, to retain highly effective teachers and staff throughout the district, innovate strategies through inferno and community engagement, uh, values to improve transparency, establish safe environment for all students. Um, the action plan will be done in May after contacting Dr. Martin, and there's some things that our team is looking at to get some input into before we finalize the plan. Um, these are the reports that we've given you consistently every month, every day, and weekly reports. Um, some of this stuff is in chart form now, but this is stuff that we constantly give to you by request. You should have.
Thank you very much for putting it in chart form.
Yes, yeah. And if you already requested it, it took about an hour, it's no big deal. Takes about five minutes, not a deal, we got it to take care of, no, no problem. Um, we have the proficiency comparison, uh, comparison report. That's given to you, it'll be in chart form, and this, but I'll go through it relatively quickly since you have it in front of you. Unless you, I want to stay at two AM, I can go slowly. But I'll go through it pretty quickly. A weekly benchmark has been requested by the board that's been given constantly by request. Um, we continue to do our principal data strategy, which we just talk about, um, ways to improve instruction and how we can implement, um, our strategies more effectively in the classroom by improving, um, our instructional practices and ensuring that we're making data decisions in the classroom. And then our assessment report, which will be a part of this. We just copying and pasting the report card over because we hadn't had accountability for two years. I know y'all wanted to see that, but we just copying and pasting for the last three years because we didn't have accountability. Y'all good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. This is our, um, achievement growth. It's five fourteen for the last three years. All we did was copy and paste. It's the reason why I didn't do the report card, because it's the same for the last three years. This is district reading before for twenty twenty-one. Went down to sixteen point nine, sixteen point nine for during our, um, COVID year. Our, our current ELS, that's our current assessment, is at nineteen point two. Reading proficiency, twenty twenty-one is our hybrid year, we had nineteen point two. That's for our ELS assessment. ELS was December or what, what month? March, March benchmark, nineteen point two. So that's where we are right now for March for ELS. And the, and the orange is the state, and the blue is where we are. All right, this is our district math proficiency. This is where we are now, so we are getting back to where we were pre-COVID. This is math proficiency. This is where we are in twenty twenty-one, this is our ELS test right now. That's the state. Is our, uh, indicator for history proficiency. This one's a little bit more complex, but, uh, we're at twenty twenty-one, twenty-one point four right now. Um, they'll start to take that test generally year-round in, um, some, took some in December, will take again in May. This is, the orange line is the, uh, state. This is where we are. This is our history proficiency. This is increasing, uh, science proficiency. I think this is going to be the toughest area of increase since we've been working primarily on math and, uh, reading. We do have a dynamic math coach, and we have put a lot of things in place that I think is going to help, but I think it's going to be a longer, a longer, um, a harder lift for science. I think it'll come. I think this year, we're going to catch our kids that maybe drop from threes to twos, get them back to three, and get them close to proficiency. I think it's going to take two, two to three years to get them where they need to be from the hybrid system. Um, I think we're doing some phenomenal things. I think we are improving, I think, at rates that I, I'm very proud of, but I just think it's going to take two years to get those kids from the bottom to, to where we need to be, so probably another, another, another year. Um, this ELS, Mermaid ELS is the current assessment, it's the fall assessment for Remember, twenty twenty-one is the hybrid year. Um, this is, uh, reading growth. This is twenty nineteen. This is our last time that they assess growth. Does everybody follow me? The last time we had accountability, yeah, two thousand nineteen. And we're right, we're already at forty-seven point three for growth. So, did we have, uh, reading growth overall? There's the state and then there's us.
So the reading growth of, uh, forty-seven point three, that was March?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, a little bit more time to go, they testing there. Here's our math growth. We're already there. So I'm not worried still when people start freaking out. This is given to you in chart form, I mean, in regular form.
Yes, it's, it's easier to see like this.
All right, and if y'all need...
Instead of charting it yourself.
Yeah, just the request.
I was charting myself.
No problem. We can do bar graphs too, if y'all want to do that.
I like it like this.
Okay.
Not wanting to chart myself.
All right, no big deal. Um, here is the, uh, math growth. We hope this surpass that. Maybe get in the sixty or seventy right there. Right, and math is always the last, you go into the last, to, to the end of the year with math, because the standards are really tough, so. And then our lower twenty-five, we should do well in that area, so growth, this should be a great growth year for us. At ELS, we're at fifty-five point two, so we already met our growth for two thousand nineteen, pre-COVID. ELS, this is the state. This is where we are now. We're already at our, our low growth for our lower twenty-five, we've already met that, about to exceed it. Any questions? Improved, um, lower math growth, we're already exceeding that from two thousand nineteen. Any questions about that? Here it is, ELS again, math low growth. Um, almost at the state level, um, past the level in two thousand nineteen. Uh, this is readiness, and right now, we're at fifteen point nine. Pre-COVID, we were at seventeen point four. So hopefully, we'll get that for twenty twenty-two and exceed that. This is the state level for, um, college and career readiness. I do expect this to increase tremendously because of the amount, amount of dual enrollment. We have two new AP courses, statistics and computer, computational thinking, so this should be exceeded too. I don't know, um, how much more it will go up, but our dual enrollment, I know, has increased with our future teacher program. They take two dual enrollment classes, we bagged computer courses, and so the amount of students that we have in dual enrollment has increased quite considerably, and now we have, um, our additional two AP courses, so we, we generally have, um, one of the highest acceleration rates probably in this area, but, um, that should increase too. So twenty twenty-one, we were at sixty-eight point four. We had been at seventy-nine percent. I hope that we will go up back to seventy-nine point four for, um, for twenty twenty-two. I feel that that's going to look good too. You think so, Deb? Yeah. But acceleration plus our AP participation is part of that, that, um, that square too, and so we know that we're going to have an increase just because we have two more AP courses. Hopefully, we'll add some more this summer with MSMS. Um, so this is acceleration, and we're very proud of this. Uh, we, Mississippi is sixty-three point five. Our, we've always been above the state in that. We'll probably exceed that this year, acceleration. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, that's great. Keep going.
Graduation rate, I would say congratulations to the high school team for having the highest graduation rate in the last eight years. Um, I know their staff is actually looked at because of some of the issues we have, but they're doing a, a great job. They're doing an amazing job, and, um, I appreciate the work that they've done doing this, what our, what our kids come into. It takes a tremendous amount of work, and, and, you know, I appreciate you all, I appreciate the work Deb is doing, all of you doing to make sure that this happens, but having an eighty-three point four seven graduation rate in the middle of a pandemic, it should be commended, and I appreciate my central office staff, all the high school staff, Ms. Lanier, Mr. Payton, we're busting them, and all the work that you do, Mary for taking pictures of them and posting them. So, uh, we'll continue to do the hard work, but this is the highest graduation rate in the last eight years, and it happened during a pandemic, and we continue to innovate through the pandemic. Any questions?
Board, do you have any questions?
All right, um, the state rate is eighty-eight point four. In twenty twenty-two, we're right at eighty-three point four seven. All right, these are the things, that's what I was going to say when you asked me that, I already up here, but I've been going over this every month. Okay, um, the National Board Certification Program, had a webinar with this week, um, there's several, um, well, districts across the country is trying to implement what we're doing by paying for professional development and allow our teachers to have reflective teaching, at the same time, receive a six thousand dollar stipend. This is for our more tenured teachers, to try to retain them. Um, and also, um, one of the statements I made in the webinar yesterday, uh, last week was that we're just fighting for the heart of education, period. It's going to be a tough haul, it's been tough work, the last two years have been tough, um, so hopefully, this will incentivize some people that have been here a little longer to stay in, to get the six thousand dollars supplement, and know that they don't have the burden of the cost. Then it, it also impacts teacher quality, because you can have a person in the classroom and they may not be effective, and so, um, this is a reflective teaching practices that will help them improve instruction at the same time. So having both the, that program will help our tenured teachers to try to stay into, um, the field of education, but it's just a tough time. Um, Future Teachers Club, um, they did an amazing job with the Mississippi Department of Education last week. They went over the professional development Rubik, and then excellent job of, um, getting into groups and really focusing on instruction. Um, they have had professional development, they do work into a dual enrollment program at the W for pre-teaching profession, and so it's our hope that they all have twelve hours in teaching. They also have internship hours with their mentor, and so we're hoping that our twenty or thirty will come back to Columbus and teach, um, here in the district. Our program is unique because we innovate. We don't feel like that you have to be a CTE student or have to choose between sports and being in a, and being, um, a teacher through dual enrollment, so we call that our gap kids. So a lot of the programs that we innovate with is to open it up to all students, so they don't have to pick between athletics and CTE, that they can be a part of something that's, uh, college and career and workforce prepared and enlistment prepared without deciding that sport or do this, sport or CTE. And so a lot of our program, if you don't understand it, that's the reason. We believe in creating a high school landscape in which all students have an opportunity to be whatever they want, um, and that's why we have the short-term courses. We're working on some more things with CTE and certification. Um, I'm working with the league with another superintendent to have cybersecurity certification outside of dual enrollment, so they can have a certification card to go into the field, because every child needs to have the option of having a landscape and not have to choose between sport, CTE, in order to make, uh, a decision about being college and career ready, and also giving them every opportunity possible before they leave high school to be able to do that. All right, um, so, and then the mentor mentee program, uh, I think I mentioned this, over a hundred and, hundred, a hundred or so of our teacher has four or less years' experience. That's the time that they end up deciding whether they're going to stay in a profession or not, um, so we have a mentor mentee program. We are, those are paid program. They do meet, and we do regular reflections, we ask questions, we talk about what they want to do, what they see that we need to improve. Those are questions that are asked constantly, what kind of policy issues that they have, so there's constant questioning of them, uh, of what's going wrong and what's going right, um, in their teaching, um, with their mentor and then with us. It gives us a lot of feedback. We are going to do a survey at the end of this year. We have been watching the state and national level about what we're doing, and people think that it's very innovative, we want to make sure we get that feedback, and we'll share that once we get it, because we want to know too, and data is important to us. I can't see, I don't have my glasses on. Um, these are just some of our parent meetings that we've had. Um, I think we've had the JSU meeting, um, we continue to have the Columbus Air Force Base Leadership Series. We had a really good one Friday. Um, Mr. Chapman called me about that one, and our military personnel have just done an amazing job of inspiring our students. Also think our professionals in the community have graduated, have really, really stepped up in this leadership series, it's gone extremely well. Um, continue to try to expose our students to the most professionals in the, in the community in order to inspire them to be college, career, and enlistment prepared. So, um, yeah, we finished up the war tours, those went well. We will start the chores, I may be working with Dr. Brown and a couple other people to go to some of the church. I am a devout Catholic, and I will go to church twice on a Sunday. Um, I'm still a Catholic, so I, I don't... Um, I'm still a Catholic, so I, I don't mind going to Baptist church, I need it. Need it, um, it's great. So I'll start doing some church tour, tours too and visiting some churches, especially during this time, it's just important for us to be in the community. Um, we love community, um, I, are saying it within the district, all that we can do, we will do, um, we'll continue to be a force of community. Just wanted to be reminded that we were in the community before COVID. We were in the housing authority doing those things that were important. It's a part of who we are to connect with our students and parents and families. It's our priority and the reason why we're here. We know in order to reduce gun violence and improve academic achievement, we have to be in the community. And we just don't wanna talk about it, we wanna be entrenched in it and make a difference. See, um, two things that I wanted to add to our parent meetings outside of the long list. Um, is that we will be working with John Hopkins University and the U.S. Department of Education at the middle school. Doing a social emotional, um, collaboration, uh, with, uh, Ms. Gardner. Uh, we are in the process of doing our artificial intelligence program, she did come back on Friday. We'll also be adding that, um, along with our aircraft maintenance program at the middle school. And the, um, and, and this program, so we're excited. So we've done a lot of programming at the high school level, now it's time for us to move to the middle school level and do some things. And Ms. Gardner continues to step up to make sure that's happening. Um, creating opportunities for students and innovating takes a, a lot of work. Um, we do rely on the, and the teachers to get feedback, like we get ready to do our innovation hubs. We met with the librarians, make sure they want to make the innovation hubs. We'll have them at the middle school and high school with three D virtual reality immersive technology. For our students, we'll use it for PBIS and for space for students to read and learn. Any questions?
I just have one. Um, looking at your, your list there. Uh, see block party, pastor's own patrol. Can you elaborate on that a little more?
Yes, that's just our program. We have pastors on control, we've had that since I've been here. And so those, that was our mentoring program, we just stepped it up. And we added the adopt the block program. And so we're asking for faith leaders to take blocks. We have several churches that have already adopted blocks. We took the most gun-infested, um, block that there was in the district. Um, and we will have another block party at the end of May. But it's just community development, us entrenching people in the community. I don't think districts like this move forward unless you're in the community, you do community development. Um, I, I, I don't think that you can do it from the boardroom. I don't think you can do it from the superintendent's chair. You have to do it by empowering people, creating a workforce that people have a pathway to the middle class, homeownership. You also have to get in community and see what the needs are. Um, have them have a sense of belonging, go to the roots. Uh, you can't make change unless you're close to the people that you need to make change with. You can't do that in the boardroom, you can't do it in the office, you have to do it in the community. So our adopt the program, that block program is part of us being in the community and making those, those connections and relationships, bringing resources to, to people. And them understanding that we care. Um, it's a lot of work, you know, but, you know, we, we've added a lot of responsibility to our plate because we care about our kids and we care about our families. And the work is important, we know changes that happen in the boardroom or in my office happens in the community.
Okay, that being said, if an organization wanted to participate, how would they go about doing so?
So right now, we're only focused on faith-based leaders? I'm sorry, right now, we're only, we're on faith-based leader, that's the focus. We feel that when religion is part of the process, everybody stays focused. And we feel that the church is the best way to lead this, this initiative. We are the only supposedly non-faith organization that's in it, and we took the, the hardest block. But this is a faith-based, we are meeting next month, so if you know a church that's interested in adopting a block, right now, that's our initiative. If somebody else wants to do something else, they can feel free to do that. But right now, that's our focus, is that faith-based churches would take responsibility for adopting a block. Are there any questions? I think we've had three, three or four blocks adopted. We have a list, we took the, like I said, the most, um, um, the one with the most crime. And then, um, another church, I know, um, DeMarcus's church has stepped up, they've taken a block. Couple other, um, churches have taken a block, and so we're excited. They'll have their block party, we'll, we'll try to attend their block parties and be a participant. We had a great time, it's a lot of fun. It's great to get in the community, it's great to see kids. I think the most amazing moment is when the child came up to me and grabbed my arm and said, thank you. You know? You know, they were able to play outside, um, get in the community, really have a lot of fun. Um, and we enjoyed it, and it's the work we do. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Uh, the TBA Energy Right Partnership, um, Tennessee Valley Authority is working with us to deal with, um, climate issues and, and, um, carbon emissions. Uh, and so we'll be working with the Columbus Light and Water. And this initiative will select schools to try to lower our energy emissions and reduce our carbon blueprint. We'll also take on the responsibility of teaching the community why emissions control in reducing our carbon blueprint is so important. Um, I was able to buy a book and actually read it this weekend on climate control and the things we can do as a community. I think that TBA partnership can come into us at the right time to be able to support this initiative. And to be able to teach our teacher, their students about the science of why it's important, um, to reduce our carbon emissions, um, and greenhouse, um, gas levels. And so we're excited about it, glad that TBA, um, chose us. The grant is forty thousand dollars with the opportunity to get to, get up to two hundred thousand dollars. I am working with Dr., the CEO of Columbus Light and Water, Angela, Dr. Videl, Dr. Videl, um, with this partnership, and we're very excited. Uh, we have had, um, some, some people to, to step up and do community initiatives. We always appreciate when people are in the community, working to clean up and do some other things. We're gonna have some initiatives of, of trying to teach people and teach our students and community on how we can be more effective in reducing our carbon emissions. So we're hoping to partner not only with TBA and Columbus Light and Water, but some community people also to talk about the importance of, of climate control. Are there any questions?
Dr. Labott, how many more slides do you have?
I know, I wanna go quickly, but then y'all say I didn't do it.
No. No, we have some parents waiting.
Right. I'm just saying, I can.
You're doing a wonderful job. The, uh, the basic part that, uh, if I can add something really quick.
Okay, all right, there you go.
Uh, thank you very much for, um, this, the, um, the.
Right, it's just, yeah.
Yes, this that you had presented to us. That's what we were really, really looking for, and thank you very much. That was very good, very good, thank you. One thing, um, uh, so the board wouldn't be able to participate in some of the block events. If you could, um, well, you're adding us to the communication link. I remember getting one for one block party. But, uh, if you could get that to us, maybe we can stop by and help or bring something or whatever, if we know that it's happening ahead of time. I know I remember getting something on one of them.
We've only had one.
Oh, okay. I was thinking you'd have several, I missed them.
But other people in the community have had them. Yeah, but we've only had one.
Oh, that's the war tours, but they had the block party.
Yeah.
At, uh.
We only have one.
Okay.
All right.
All right, ready to move on. Very good, I, uh, thank you very much for this right here. It's clear, and believe it or not, now you can see the picture.
Yeah, it's just, you know.
The growth is there, and it's good to actually see it. And, um, we can relate to it a lot easier. Uh, the other times, the charts, you know, you charting on yourself, but this right here is great, thank you. Okay, moving, uh, right along. Excuse me. I got to refocus from Dr. O'Beal. Now we're at, uh, open forum. And, uh, first person, we have Mr. Tommy Smith renaming Columbus High School Football Stadium. Hello, Mr. Smith, how have you been?
I'm fine, fine.
Good. Good to see you.
I do appreciate the, uh, Columbus School Board allowing me to come and, uh, present. I'll be very brief, I, I know it's been a long night. But we, we've been, uh, dealing with this for about three years. Uh, I'm here to try to persuade the board to, uh, name the Columbus Football Stadium after Coach Billy Brewer. Who was the, uh, head football coach at, uh, Columbus High School for, during the, uh, sixties and seventies. And he led Columbus to numerous, uh, state, uh, championships during that time. Uh, he was a Columbus boy. Uh, he played and, uh, it was all Big Eight, nearly all sports that he played in, uh, growing up in Columbus. And then he came back to Columbus and coached and led Columbus to, uh, like I said, many, uh, championships. Uh, yeah, it meant a lot to, uh, Coach Brewer to, uh, make Columbus successful in nearly all areas. Uh, and especially sports and, of course, especially football. Uh, and I think it really means a lot to, to come back, for a person to come back to their hometown and that they play for and coach at that hometown. And make them, uh, a championship team. Uh, I submitted, uh, a packet back of a year, it's been about a year, a year and a half ago, to the, uh, board members, uh, listing, uh, letters of support from members of the community. Uh, all walks of life, uh, were in those letters. Uh, even, uh, uh, both black and white players, uh, submitted le- uh, letters that they thought that the field should be named after Coach Brewer. Uh, business leaders, state, uh, and local politicians. And like I said, from all walks of life. Uh, Co- Coach Brewer went on to be the head football coach at, uh, Ole Miss. And he was the, uh, he was there for about ten years. And he was the winningest, uh, football coach at Ole Miss at that time, except for Johnny Vaught. Johnny Vaught was the famous, uh, football coach who was like Bear Bryant, kinda, when, you know, all the games when he was, uh, uh, at Ole Miss. Uh, I, one discrepancy, uh, maybe it's my fault, I don't know. Uh, during this, the time we started this process, uh, I broke my hip. And I was out commission for doing therapy and, and all kinds of things like that. And, uh, I don't know, uh, the last I heard is that this had been tabled by Mr. Spears. And that's been, like I said, two or three years ago. And I did call Mr. Spears several times. And maybe, and I'm not criticizing him in any way, but I never heard anything back about this, uh, about naming the football field after Coach Brewer. But, uh, I think, uh, it means a lot, not only to, uh, someone, uh, if they're successful, successful in coaching, uh, football, of what they do off the field. And a couple of things that, that, uh, comes to mind was, uh, when he was at Ole Miss, one of his football players, Chuckie Mullins, was paralyzed. Uh, when they played, uh, University of Vanderbilt. And, uh, Coach Brewer was very instrumental in building a house, a home for him, for the handicapped home, uh, at Ole Miss for, uh, Chuckie Mullins. And I don't think Bernie Iams would mind me mentioning, and also, uh, in his letter of support, he mentioned that, uh, when Coach Brewer coached, uh, uh, in Columbus League High, uh, that they stopped to eat. And, uh, the owner of the restaurant refused to, uh, the black players to serve the black players. So Coach Brewer loaded everybody up and brought them back and would not let anybody, uh, eat at that restaurant. He did everything?
Mm-hmm.
He led also the first integrated football team, uh, to the state championship in Columbus, and I believe it was in nineteen seventy. Uh, he made a, a long-lasting impression on a lot of students and including myself. Now, I wouldn't have stayed here four hours tonight. Uh, and he taught me never to give up and to keep working hard no matter the odds against you. Uh, I don't know if you, if you know the, the process that we went through, uh, but to name a, a, a building or a field, I was told by Mr. Spears, that you have to be, uh, passed for two years. Uh, I think that, uh, Coach Brewer has passed now for, uh, for four years. Uh, and then there's a fourteen, fourteen-day period where you have to advertise and anyone can come and that, the, they are against naming a building or a field after someone. They can come and before the board and, uh, uh, and show their displeasure with doing that. So, um, I'm here to ask you to, uh, if we do the process long as quickly as we can. I know you're very busy, busy time of the year. Uh, but like I said, I, it's been a couple of years ago when nearly fifty people wrote letters of support that, that I submitted to the board. And then I never heard anything, uh, for the last two years much. Uh, the process has kinda stalled. So if the board could see to it, to move the process along, I think the, the next step would be, whenever it's at the board's pleasure, to have this fourteen-day where you advertise and anyone can, uh, come before the board who may be against it. But, uh, I appreciate your consideration of naming the, uh, high school football field after Elijah. He's a Columbus boy. We think he's very deserving. There, I think there's been twenty-five to thirty buildings and fields that have been named after people, uh, in the Columbus public school system. We certainly think that Billy Brewer deserves, uh, the honor of having the football field named after him because of all the things that he did for, uh, Columbus High School. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, you, you are correct in saying that it is tabled, uh, from the, I guess it was a couple of years ago. And the board voted then to, uh, table this. Uh, right now, uh, board, is there anyone that's making, would like to make a motion for it to be removed from being tabled? It remains tabled. Did I follow that properly?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you very much. And the only other thing I can say is, um, you know, I applaud you for the way that you have represented, uh, Mr. Brewer. You know, that was the first time I heard his name, when you started talking about him, really. And, uh, I, I said that, um, he made a great impression upon you and likewise some others. Because I did read the information that you did pass along to the board. I did read the, uh, recommendations or reference letters and all of that. And I do thank you very much for your continuous, um, I'll say, support and striving to, you know, with this name. But at this time, the board has tabled it, so that we'll, um, right now, it's tabled. So if we continuously come back and discussing it again, we will respect you whenever you come back to open forum again. Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and thanks for waiting. Appreciate you. Now we have Ms. Shanice Bailey. Shanay, okay, Shanay Bailey, welcome, Ms. Bailey, how are you? It's a long board meeting.
Yes. Um, I am here tonight to, uh, speak to you about my children. I have five children, but I'm only here to talk about my younger two. Ava's nine and Noah is five, and they are both, uh, on the spectrum, they both have autism. And I am here requesting that the district consider, uh, making some changes and going in a different direction with respect to how it deals with and, um, educates its children with autism. Um, I did a little research before I came here tonight. And the CDC says that one in forty-four children are diagnosed with autism. And then I looked at Columbus's website, and it says that you, we start, that this district has about thirty-three hundred students. So if my math is right, that means that we should have about seventy-five kids with autism. If we do, I don't know where they are. If we did, I If we did, our district would have a very different program with respect to how it's educating the children with autism. I want to tell you a little bit about my experience thus far. When my daughter Ava was first started in this district in about twenty-eighteen, um, she had a one-on-one, which is a paraprofessional, that's a um, just a, an assistant, more or less. And that was just for safety purposes. Um, anyone who is familiar with children with autism probably knows that uh, they have barriers to learning. And my child it has a number of barriers to learning. Communication is her biggest barrier because she is primarily non-verbal. She has an AAC device um, that she utilizes to uh, communicate and she also uses sign language. My child also has sensory issues. Um, every Sunday when we walk into church, she's like this. And it's not because the praise team sounds bad, because they, they sound wonderful. But entering into new environments, loud things, um, it provokes a sensory response. And in addition to um, those types of sensory issues, uh, my child also uh, deals with um, social skills. She has, you know, different issues where it's pretty typical that kids with autism have difficulties uh, socializing with their same age peers, whether they're not disabled, whether they're disabled or not. Um, and so these barriers to learning um, prevent her, prevented her from being successful in a regular classroom. They also prevented her from being successful in a self-contained classroom because there was not a single person in Columbus Municipal School District who knew how to get beyond those barriers that existed for her. They didn't know what to do, they didn't know how to craft appropriate goals. They didn't know, certainly didn't know how to implement the goals. And so I have filed two state complaints and was successful in both against the district based on the provision of services. Um, the second state complaint had to do with the refusal of the district to provide ABA therapy. And that's applied behavior analysis, that's the only approved method uh, from insurance companies and doctors to deal with some of these behaviors. And when I say behaviors, I don't mean falling out in the floor, I mean those behaviors that I just described, uh, that are suitable for children who have autism. And so I was successful. I was able to uh, get Ava ABA therapy. But the ABA therapy is in Tupelo. And so if you drive to Tupelo for a week, it's easy. You know, it's an hour there and an hour back. Even with two kids with autism in the backseat. You drive to Tupelo for a month, it's a little taxing, but it's doable. I've been driving to Tupelo for two, going on two years, it'll be two years in June. And when I touched bases with Ms. Lanier back in January, I said, where are we? Do we have somebody in the district now that knows about autism, that's had some specialized training? Are we bringing somebody into the district? What are we gonna do? This is not a long-term solution. Me driving to Tupelo, I am shouldering the burden of educating my child and that is not how it's supposed to be. Nobody is in the district. And so we have had meetings to try to figure out a re-entry plan for my daughter because not only is my daughter in the district, but my son Noah will be entering the district in the fall. And he also has an IEP with the district. And he is also primarily non-verbal. And he also has many of those same sensory issues that Ava has. And so I am here tonight making an appeal to you all. We must bring in someone with um, expertise in this area. It's necessary. And I know I don't have the only two children with autism. I know there's at least one other child from Columbus that's driving to Tupelo. And I know that there's another one that ref- refused it because she had other children and could not drive. I have, I'm a practicing attorney and I have pared down my practice to almost nothing because we're there in Tupelo from eight to twelve. I'm gonna be up in the morning and on the road at seven with two children in my backseat going to Tupelo. When we get back though, it's not over because then I have to transport Ava to speech therapy at Stokes Beer twice a week. And I have to transfer, transport her to OT at Baptist. This is not how it's supposed to be. I'm not supposed to be shouldering this burden, this is the responsibility of the school district. And so that's my request, is that we get somebody in this district that knows what to do, that knows how to teach children with these types of sensory issues. And that we train the staff that we have here now. Because they don't know what to do. As best intentions that they have, they just didn't know how to craft appropriate goals. They didn't know how to deal with those issues. Ava was a, she's, we're fortunate that she's gotten beyond it with some of the therapies that she received in Tupelo. But she was a mouser and she would put things in her mouth. And they would give her chewies and other things, none of which worked. But it took them in Tupelo uh, doing what they do at the autism center. And we rarely, if ever, have those issues now. So, I, I want you to take a look at, and I hope that they still exist, I should have looked at it before now. But there is a school called The Spectrum Academy. Um, when I was doing my research, looking for a place, because I considered moving back, it's in the Jackson area and we moved here from Jackson in twenty-sixteen. And it has the best example of what is the appro- an appropriate environment for children with autism. In that one classroom, I visited the classrooms, they had a special education teacher and they had a RBT, which is a behavior therapist. Those are the people who work one-on-one at the autism center with the children every day. The BCBA, the Board Certified Behavior Analyst oversees the RBTs. And they can, you know, treat more than one kid, actually they treat uh, quite a few kids. But in that classroom, they had a special education teacher, RBT, and some kids were working with the teachers, some were working independently on task boxes and file folders, others were on their computer or their iPad. And it was, you could tell that the children were thriving. And also they had their speech therapists and their occupational therapists rotating through as well. I mean, it couldn't have been a better environment to facilitate success as children with autism would know it. You know, you want them to be the very best child that they can be uh, on their level. And so I'm going to um, um, end here because I know everybody's time is valuable and we've been here a while. Uh, but I would hope that you would take into consideration my appeal to you this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would be more, I've done a ton of research. I would be more than happy to share that with anyone who is willing to listen. Um, I've also here, this is not the appropriate forum. I've run into some interesting um, situations with the current staff. And I would love to speak to anyone, uh, Mr. Nito, um, about that at an appropriate time. Thank you so much. Do you have any question?
Board, you are. We were, we're fine, I have our notes and we would uh, ma'am, we would uh, refer you to uh, Dr. Labad and her staff. And I'm sure they will, you know, communicate with you.
I would hope so. I've reached out to her before without success, but I hope it would be different this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming and staying. Thank you very much. We have another one. Okay. Next we have Ms. Arlene Weatherby. Welcome, Mrs. Weatherby.
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome. You know, I must say that it's very important for us to listen to our parents. Uh, when people come to the school board meetings and they, uh, they are our stakeholders here in the district, in our community. And it's important for us to listen. We as a board, we don't make decisions as to the outcomes for any of yours, um, what you're coming before us. But we do owe it to you to sit and listen and that's what we're trying to do at this time. So I want you all to understand that, that uh, we're not uh, into the regular ongoings, what's referred to as our day-to-day operations. But we are responsible for policies and procedures that pertain to the uh, education for all our kids. Okay.
I appreciate you saying that because um, it is very hard to talk to anyone uh, in this district. Um, good evening. On April the first, I was taken in the last sunrise of my stay in Cancun. Looking over the twenty-third floor balcony on, of my room, I heard instant white waves hitting the shoreline. All were different, but from the same Gulf water. Some were small, some were medium, some were huge, but from the same water. Just like the waves, some here in Columbus Municipal School District are small waves, some are medium waves, and then we have the big waves. But because we are all waves, we should all be in this together. Again, my name is Arlene Peak Weatherby, I am here as a grandmother. They call me Lili to two biological grandchildren in this district. But I'm also the same to many other students. I'm not here as an adversary, but an advocate. This is my daughter Mary Weatherby and it's her children who I am here tonight speaking on behalf of and other children's whose parents and they don't have or have not had a voice in this district. Mary is the PTO of, and vice, uh, Vice President of the PTO at Columbus High School. She's also a board member at the Boys and Girls Club and a child therapist. First and foremost, I am not here to offend anyone, but I'm here to speak my opinion and the truth. If it offends you, please look in a clean mirror at what is only a reflection, but mainly look in your heart because that is where truth really is. I would not be standing here if I had not been convicted of not speaking up a long time ago. I have been trying to get out of Columbus for the last two years after the passing of my mother. Only came back here in twenty-fifteen because she was sick. I had given up all hope, excuse me, for CMSD until we would be introduced to a new superintendent who according to a headline dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, "Community a Priority for Incoming Superintendent", who chose us over fifteen other districts, who didn't have the passion to go anywhere else but CMSD, whose pro- top priority is engaging with the Columbus community, who said that immersing herself in the community has always been a priority, who Tish Williams, the Executive Director of Hancock County Chamber of Commerce, said she is somebody that has a contagious energy. Where is the passion? Where is the energy? Where is the bringing the community together until this past month with ward meetings and then block parties with hot dogs and hamburgers? Dr. Labad, your contract was extended for another one-point-five years with an increase of salary from one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, according to an article dated October sixteenth, twenty-nineteen in the Commercial Dispatch. Your new contract ends October the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. What is going to happen to pull us together? I pray that this surge of bringing the district together is not because of a contract ending in twenty-twenty-three. And as I looked at your presentation, all that looks good on paper. But until you can actually, and this board and whoever's is here, can hear what people are truly saying, then you all will see a difference. I am here because of what I have seen and not for what someone told me. I have been begging my daughter over and over to move out of Columbus so that my grandchildren could be exposed to better educational opportunities and a better climate of accepting people for people and not because of their status. She didn't. I didn't understand until a couple of weeks ago and God gently but forcefully said to me, "Your assignment is not complete." My assignment? Dr. Labad, when you arrived here over four years ago, I emailed you twice to welcome you to Columbus and to this district. Not once did you respond to me. Dr. Labad, I attended and at the beginning of the school year registration at CHS, when all the schools came to register. And I had a table set up for the prevention of underage drinking and prescription drug abuse to help make our schools drug and alcohol free. You were about to walk past my table and I got your attention and spoke to you, trying to explain to you about the services I could bring to the district free of charge. You immediately brushed me off by saying, "I'll let Mr. Chapman know and have him get in touch." A few days and a couple of weeks later, no call from Mr. Chapman. I called Mr. Chapman and explained everything that I had just mentioned. He said he would get back in touch. To this day, plus almost four years, no phone call from Mr. Chapman. I didn't give up. I was able to come weekly for ten weeks to teach the students in ROTC with the invitation and help of Chief Masses Sergeant, retired Rita Felton and Colonel Gooseby when he arrived. I saw where the ROTC program did not get the school nor the district help. Yes, there were unruly students in the program because they were dumped there and didn't want to be there. Yes, I was able to help turn some of their attitudes around and teach about respect and to make the most of it while they were there. On the other hand, my granddaughter who was looking forward to her second year in ROTC did not get her wishes because the counselor could not make it work. This program was an opportunity for my granddaughter to learn and grow in leadership, to grow in leadership skills and eventually go to college and be a part of the unit and eventually become an officer in the United States Air Force. That was taken away from her in this school district, but she will pursue her dreams with her family guidance. I was also able to get drug-free programs at McKeller and Columbus Middle School with volunteers, which were retired schoolteachers, undergrads from MUW and the Air Force personnel. I served four counties at that time, but my county and my city were the hardest to get in. Dr. Labad, my five-year grant was about to end and I was actively seeking a position within the school district so I could be a village member to youth. Over a year ago, I applied for a career coach position for this district. You and Mr. Chapman asked me one question each. When I was answering your question and during the entire Zoom interview, you maybe looked up at me twice. You were busy looking down, maybe typing, I don't know. At that moment, I prayed to God to not let me be offered that position. Thank goodness I didn't get it because within a day or two, I was offered a position to work with at-risk youth and their families, the juvenile court and detention center. By the way, some of these youth belong to our Columbus Municipal School District. Not one time in over a year, to my knowledge, have I, have, have you or other leaders, nor the high school, nor middle school principals come to see about our youth to let them know, "Hey, you made some choices that are not in alignment with the rules, but I want you to know, I love you and we're going to get through this."
How, how much more do you have, Ms. Arlene?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My grandson was suspended from school because of a botched-up investigation of an incident on, on the bus. A letter to the editor was published March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two about this, this suspension. A suspension that was not investigated in a timely manner. It reads, "What do you do when your grandchild has been suspended from their elementary school for supposedly being guilty of fighting on a school bus after school? On Wednesday, my grandson was accused of fighting and Principal Lee did not suspend him until Thursday afternoon. His mom, my daughter, did not get informed until three oh-two PM Thursday of the fight and the five-day suspension. The only investigation done was that the principal asked the driver and other kids on the bus if my grandson hit another child, who in fact hit him first. My grandson was only telling this aggressor to stop hitting his second-grade friend. The principal did not look at the video on the bus until today, which was March twenty-eighth. It was done after several phone calls to the principal..."
Excuse me.
Okay.
Excuse me. Now you moved into a student matter.
Okay.
And we have to shut down right here, okay?
Okay.
That's a student matter.
Okay.
If you would please, any concerns you have, please speak with our superintendent.
Okay, we've tried. I've called and no call has been returned. Spoke to Dr. Dito. It took two days for him to say anything, and I have, we have asked for an appeal. We have not gotten a phone call about an appeal, and this has been since March 25th.
What advice do you give them, Mr. Hefield, please?
Whatever the student, and I don't have any of the facts other than what you've told me. You just need to follow the school procedures as far as the appeal with this written?
Well, we have, we have done that, and no one has...
Then that will, what was, I don't want to get into what his punishment was.
Well, his punishment was five days, and then, then they looked on the, on the bus camera on the fifth day, and it did not show my grandson hitting anyone. And then the, Dr. Dito and Mr. Lee took three of the days back, and still have two days on his record, which we are not going to do. But you know what? It's okay, because I am going to follow through with this, and I will be contacting the State Department on this, and I've already sent a letter to Doc, to Senator Wicker, he's a friend of mine, to let him know that this school district is not what it says it is. We have employees to, you're welcome. We have employees too who are just faking it until they make it. And this is one thing I don't understand. I have an opportunity to come here and speak. I have been here since 5:30 this afternoon, and you want to shut me down now? No, this is not acceptable, and this is not the last that you've heard from me. And I will, Dr. Dito, I'm expecting a phone call, me or my daughter, about an appeal for Braxton Butler.
I just have to say something. I mean, like, so basically, we've been sitting here this whole time, and my son was suspended for five days for something that he did not do. I came up here on a Friday. I sat up here the whole time. I had to take my son to work with me because nobody was here to talk to me. Five days for a child that didn't do anything on the bus. No evidence was proven. But it's not a problem. I will contact Jackson again. I will contact whoever I need to for the sake of my 10-year-old son, since nobody cares. I'm a PTO Vice President, and you wonder why there's no parental involvement? Because you all don't care. But you want to brush us off.
Thank you very much. I surely hope that you all don't think that we were intentionally trying to brush you all off. Thank you, thank you very much.
It seems like it belongs to you all and not to the people who are supposed to go on to. No, you all do not care the way that you say. Oh, yeah, the general principle of having a 10-year-old sign a statement without parental, two statements without parental help.
I really have to follow a board policy, and we did, and we did let you speak a long time. And the policy said three minutes. Okay. Okay. Moving right along. Roman number 10. Officer, the Superintendent Dr. Shere Labad, School Operations, Superintendent Travel. Superintendent Travel Report and her review. Dr. Labad?
Since the last time we met, I attended the ASCD conference during spring break. Was able to complete some projects with special education, and also get some more details about how to improve social emotional wellness for adults. Been working with Christina and Deb about how we can make it, add more layers to our social emotional wellness for adults. We, I think we've done a decent job with kids, but we're going to try to do some more things that are systematic and more in-depth with teachers and students. Are there any questions about ASCD?
Or do you have any questions?
We are looking at, yeah, we are looking at some programs and getting counselors to evaluate them now to see if we can do things that are more entrenched. I think we are in the beginning phases of seeing more emotion and mental illness issues amongst, among students, but I think too among our faculty. Next is, we are in the League of Innovative Schools. We had a spring convene in Cincinnati. It's where we are working on the cybersecurity certification for students that do, that want to go the career route. Also, we have started the process of having an innovation hub at both the middle school and high school in the libraries with immersive technology and, and with student input. So what we're doing is we really are doing a survey, allowing the students to choose exactly what technologies they want in the innovation hub, and design the innovation hub at the middle and high school. Hopefully, we can get it implemented at the elementary levels too. The spring convene is, is a lot about, it was a lot about social emotional wellness, workforce innovation, and technology innovation. Very blessed to be around superintendents all over the country who are very progressive thinking, and it's just a good meeting and brought a lot back. Got a lot of information on things that we can do as a district to continue to move forward. Are there any questions about the league or spring convene in Cincinnati?
Well, do you have any questions? Any questions? Any comments? No question, no comments. We're moving. Okay. Now we're at Superintendent Recommendations. B1. Be sure that I'm reading it right. You all give me a minute. Consideration and a discussion to approve the revised salary schedule, number 24, for FY '22, effective April 12th. And that will be effective tomorrow, April 12th. This is for Human Resource Director and the Assistant. The only difference is, the Assistant, okay? Okay. Requesting a motion to approve. So moved. The motion is being made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item number two. Consideration and a discussion to approve the revised schedules for 25, which is Technology, 29, which is Maintenance, 30, which is Custodial, 31, Child Nutrition, 32, Safety Officers, and 33 would be Transportation. You know, it's amazing the investments that the board is willing to put on our employees for all of your hard work, and we hope that you all are mindful that that hard work is appreciated, regardless as to where you may hear. You know, I'm not a street committee person, if you all know me, so I'm not really interested in what's being said around, but I am very mindful of what we say here during the board meeting, because here is the only time that we are officially board members. So I'm requesting a motion at this time to approve all of the salaries.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second by Dr. Brown. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Holly for working on the salary schedules with us for the last two months and our initiative to move and prove the salaries for the last year and a half. Thank you.
Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Now we're moving on to item number three. Consideration and a discussion to approve staff, staff, whoo, personnel items. Staff personnel items. Is there a motion made on this item?
So moved.
The motion is made to approve the complete staff personnel items. Requesting a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. The vote is 3-2. The motion passes. Moving right on to number... Office of the Business Manager. Consideration to approve the financials. Board, we ask that you look at item number 1, A, B, C, D, E, and F. Requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving right along. The monthly Ad Valorem Tax Collection Analysis Report. Ms. Ward, just would you elaborate on there real quick for us, please? I think. So we're doing all right with that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions about this item before we move on? Okay, moving right along. CMSD, the Fund Balance Report. Look at your bank cash balance yearly comparison report. The Athletic Event Report. Moving right along. Consideration and a discussion to approve the Budget Amendment. And, which is K, and L, consideration to approve the Fixed Assets Disposals. Requesting approval for both of these items.
So moved.
I'm scared, am I moving too fast? Okay. The motion is made by Dr. Schumay, requesting a second. I'll make the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question on the asset disposals. What is catastrophic? Okay, it was, yeah, it's the last item. Everything else is junked. And the last item is at Cook. It's an HB Pro Book. Catastrophe. Okay. I was just, I'd never seen it before. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Have to go back and go through way back up there. Moving right along to our Claim Docket. Requesting a motion to approve the Claim Docket.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the Claims Docket with the... Well, can we approve it until we get further information? On certain items, or we have to pull those items?
Well, if we, if we have a net 45 to pay for them, we're in, we're in trouble of not, of breaking state law. Yeah.
Well, I guess I have to make the motion. Well, it's, it's regarding the travel from, on page 10.
For, for what? For who?
It's for you.
Oh.
What we were saying is an estimate, but what we were given is different.
Oh, that's because it's all my travel, it's three trips. And one, one...
But the estimates were totally different.
From which one?
All of them.
Okay, so what questions do you have specifically?
I don't know, because we don't have breakdown. I would get...
Yeah, but I can answer them if you have any questions. Is it, but just know that all travel is estimated until actual travel happens? And so if it's more, then that's just an estimate that happens sometimes.
I know, but it's like almost double.
For which trip?
We don't know. The complete combined amount.
Right. So... Would you, would you like for her to go get them? Look them over?
Yeah, that would, that would be good. Now, I don't want to look at them. I just need to get the details, because you gave us double in estimation.
Yeah, but so, so just to ask me specifically, she probably needs to get them and then just show it to y'all. You can go get them, it's with her.
What she's saying is that the travel has been approved, and then when we actually pay for them, they double.
Well, that happens, it's just part, that's why it's called estimated travel? Because it, sometimes, and I can tell you that...
Sometimes it will go up.
Well, and I can tell you that in being in major cities, the Uber costs to and from hotels are $100 now because of gas.
It's very expensive for travel.
Yes.
To, uh, to conferences.
And car rental and putting gas in cars is also double. So I just, we just changed that for this summer for our travel for our principals, doubled and tripled the amount because of gas prices. But she can go get that for y'all.
Okay, we'll wait. Those items. I'm trying to look at it.
And I do want to note for the record that all my expenses go through the Business Manager with a receipt for the time that I'm gone, and it has to be approved before it's on the docket.
And it has to be approved before it's on the docket. Mister, do you mind also for the record that all my travel is approved by her before I go? Yeah. I'll say it once it gets over here. Let's see if she burns off stuff that can be...
I would like to say for the record that I am aware that I do approve Dr. Labat's travel. But some of the travel was marked zero. And if the district, if it's marked zero and then you reimburse, then that cost, that estimation should be on what I'm signing off on for approval.
And I want to clarify for the record. Every trip that's zero has been zero. This is a combination of several trips. So if they're... Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, because it was zero.
No, don't worry about it.
Just like the ones coming up as zero. Yeah. So if it's zero, it's zero.
So how many was it, Mrs. Wood?
It was three.
It's just three trips? All right, Chicago.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is three. I don't know. I'm going to look up here. All right, one, one, four, nine, three. One, one, four, nine, three, so I don't see it. Okay, three, three, four, four. Three, three, four, four. All right. I don't know. Ms. Young, is this what you're saying? If you look at this, Ms. Rogers, since I see you looking puzzled, but if it says three, three, four, four, I don't see it on the docket anywhere. If it says four hundred and two dollars, I don't see it on the docket anywhere. But I see different amounts on the docket. Let me make it larger, Dr. Labat, so you can see what I'm talking about. Can you see it? See there? See, these amounts are different. That's why the question is asked. You know, I'm used to doing travel myself. I was an administrator eighteen years. I did travel. Oh, the docket.
So, when I go back into her reimbursement, all of that is collected. It's not individual, it's not broken down. Say, this is her flight, or this is her travel with Uber, or these are meals. All of that is on one sheet, so it's going to be collected.
So... One, two, three, four, five, six. That's why it ended up with different lines.
And I don't know how they actually do it, but I know what I do online.
Yeah. I see how you do yours on your end. That's why I signed it. Because I understand how you do it. That's why I signed up on it. I see exactly how you've done yours.
Yeah, yeah, you do sign up on it.
I do.
So what is the specific question?
I guess the specific question may be for clarity to understand the difference. So that the question won't be asked for future references. Because you're looking at the amount here and... Oh, this, here, here, you can have this. Yeah.
It's going to have your hotel stay, it's going to have your Uber. It's going to have lodging, travel, other. All of those are combined at the end. Because it's just one account line that pays for it. You may see that it's broken down up here. But when it comes to us and we're reimbursing it, we got all that together, so it's just one entry. Does that make sense? You're not going to see the sixty-one, the one-seventy, the seventy-one.
Right, yeah, because it's a different amount. We understand that. It's just an estimate. But we were just asking, there was... There was so much travel, we didn't know what goes with what basically.
But yeah, I just, I didn't know when you asked the question, that's why I was puzzled. I didn't, I didn't remember anything just working out like that. When it's entered, it's just entered as one amount for the whole trip.
I wouldn't have seen it looking like that.
The travel object code is just five eighty. It may look like there's so much to cause. It may have gone farther than what I gave you. Because sometimes, if I don't get it in by the time the docket closes, then it's going to carry over to the next week. So that may be, yeah.
I never get it in. I'm trying to...
So sometimes it carries over because I missed the docket.
Just like, like I went to Jackson and I just did my mileage for Jackson for the girls' trip. That's one, probably one of the things on there this month, because I hadn't had time to do it. When I drove to Jackson back in my car.
Oh.
Right. Yes. Probably, it's probably stuff in March and stuff in April. And it could have been mileage for one...
There's six different entries. That's going to be six different trips, right? You only got three.
Yeah.
That's why it was a question. That's why you got the question.
Yeah, and it's probably the deadline I didn't make in March for the other trips for the deadline. Yeah, it just, well, I just, when I get it in, if I don't meet the deadline, she got to put it on the next month. So I didn't take six trips in April. It's just, that's when the stuff is done. And if I don't make the deadline, I just don't.
So this is March.
I don't know. I don't even look at it. February. Really, yeah, you're right. It could.
Okay.
Thirty days swing for you. Is it thirty day for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And another issue, reason I get reimbursement is because I don't get cash advancements, which I can start doing and have the district pay ahead of time so y'all ain't got to reimburse me. That's a lot easier than me having ten thousand dollars out on my credit card. And that's fine with me for the district to pay upfront so we don't have all these questions. But I'll repeat, I don't hook or crook.
We didn't say you hooked or crooked. We just simply asked the questions. That's what we're supposed to do.
And respectfully, if y'all can ask me at the review meeting, you know, we could have answered this question very clearly. The Business Manager was there last week. She could have clearly went over the docket or y'all could have asked me earlier today. We would have definitely didn't have done that respectfully. And thank you, Holly, for the explanation.
Ms. Young, would you like to make your motion again, please?
No.
Ma'am?
No, ma'am.
Requesting a motion to approve the claim docket. Okay, I'm sorry. You don't have a word. She said she was rescinding it. She took it back. Is that where, she rescinded her motion?
I move that we approve the claim docket.
Will you make the motion, please, Mr. Sparks?
Ah, yes. I move that we approve the claim docket.
Okay. The motion is made by Mr. Sparks to approve the claim docket. Requesting a second.
Second.
Second, but Dr. Schumay, any discussion?
Just for future reference, so that everybody's on the same page. It's a thirty day swing. And there's some things that'll make the docket and there are others that won't. Which in turn explains why we have three here versus six. Okay, thank you.
That's all we needed.
It's the request, no problem. No problem. And generally, people get cash advances. I don't. I put everything on my American Express. But I can start doing the advances from the district so if they pay for it, then it won't look like the docket's reimbursing it so much. The district can give us checks and go from there. Yeah. No, I'm just saying, it probably will be easier for me to do that.
Whichever is your preference. The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, second by Dr. Schumay. The discussion has been made. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. The motion passes, three to two. Moving right on. Federal Programs and IDEA Monthly Financial Reviews. The federal programs and IDEA. Board, do you have any questions regarding this report? If no questions, we'll move right on to the budget calendar. Did you have an opportunity to look at it? It was on the agenda items on Wednesday also. Moving right along to the consent agenda. The monthly policy review. Consideration and a discussion to approve the policy during the April eleventh board meeting. This is the new policy for student transportation and the current recommended policy for purchase orders and contracts. Requesting a motion, and I'm going to go on and include some more policies to it if you'll follow with me, please. Policy EDA, use of private vehicles for school purposes. Policy possession of weapons in school, on school premises. Evaluation of employees. Student purchase of district-issued technology. Reporting attendance for virtual learning. Student conduct, suspensions, and education of homeless children and youth. Requesting a motion to approve these policies through number nine. Did I, number two?
Yeah.
We are approving that one individually, sir. Requesting a motion to approve these policies through number nine.
So moved.
The motion has been made by Dr. Schumay requesting a second. I'll make the second. All right, the second is by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to number two. Consideration to approve DJEJA. The bill payment authorization capital equipment, goods, and services. This is requesting a motion to approve this policy.
So moved.
The motion is made by Dr. Schumay requesting a second.
I have a question here. So, we can make the second and then discuss it before voting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, second.
The second is made by Mr. Sparks. Discussion.
Okay, and maybe I'm wrong, but if my memory serves me correct, then we recently voted for fifty thousand? And now we want to go to a hundred thousand? But when we voted for the fifty thousand, it was enough? What changed? The price of lumber? Oh, say it again.
I requested two hundred and fifty about a year ago. The fifty thousand dollar limit is tied around. We had to deny a classroom to do a small field trip to the movies because we didn't have enough left over to pay for it. We have a fifty thousand dollar limit between dockets. Our utilities take up almost all of that. So if we pay our utilities, that doesn't leave our student activities anything to work with. And not all student activities are known ahead of time in order to make the docket, especially athletics. Those direct teams are in the morning, maybe two days in advance. They pay for the meat, but we're here to blow.
Right.
We really have our hands tied to the fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So basically, what you're saying, when it was first presented, we didn't take into consideration the utilities and things of that nature?
For organizations big, it's probably unheard of, the monthly, month to month, that'd be able to only have fifty thousand as expenditure to buy something. Like, for instance, like my credit card that I was just talking about. I got twenty thousand limit. It's just mine. You know what I mean? Just for one individual. Let alone five hundred ninety employees. Let alone thirty-three hundred kids. You know what I mean? How can we operate and pay bills at this magnitude? Right, yes, yes.
I think when our girls did the championship, we had to add in the motion for them to, the item for them to stay overnight, was it?
And I also think too, with everything being inflated, I just, we just can't operate like that.
Okay. Nothing like understanding.
I just wanted to know the backstory. Yeah, to get an understanding as to why we went from the fifty to the hundred. Okay, all right, I got you.
Okay, everybody understand? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is, all in favor, did everybody?
Yes, sir.
It's unanimous. Moving right along. Consideration to approve agreements, contracts, memorandums, out-of-state travel, field trips, and transfers. Looking at item number one. ESER Architect Resolution for Building Updates and Repairs. Requesting a motion to approve. Requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Dr. Schumay. Requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Discussion.
Ah, yes. When do we fill in the blanks? It was before, it's asking...
This is only the selection of the project.
Okay.
These are the projects that were to be removed after. So it's more than the, like, that there were more to be removed. You know that there are certain things we're doing, like, perfect, so what is that? That is a set project, but anything that may arise. This right here is only selecting the architect. And it's not setting what actual projects or for contracts.
What architect is selected?
Uh, you.
You. My eyes are burning. I'm sorry. Eyes are burning big time.
That's the part, was that, that was in the, was that the part of the packet what we were going through last Wednesday? That's what you're saying this time?
Yeah, Wednesday.
All right.
I don't remember reading that. Okay, we've had discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Okay, right now, I'm going to look at item number two, which is J five donation. Columbus Light and Water, TBA Community Care, nonprofit certification... which is J-5 Donation, Columbus Light and Water, TBA Community Care, uh, Non-Profit Certification Agreement, and the, uh, Dispatch, the Renewal Contract for the Dispatch. If we could, uh, approve these all together, please? Requesting a motion.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right...
Oh, I have a question. I'm sorry. I was trying to get it out.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, the, the form is blank. Which option are, on the Dispatch, it said renewal? Have we al, always had a contract with them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. What, what was the amount that we went with last year?
I think we got the cheapest one. Yeah, it's a thirty, it's a thirty-two-hundred one. I'm pretty, like, ninety percent.
I'm sorry, I should, I, I should have already done that. The VIP Plan One, and it's gonna be, um, fifty-two weeks at color, and it's on Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, I think we always get the cheapest.
The thirty, okay. Got it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna slow down. All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on. Okay, now we're at number five. Superintendent to Attend the Spirit Through Leadership Symposium. Systems Leadership for Equality in Chicago. Oh, when's, I'm sorry, I didn't even click on this. When is this, Dr. Labott?
That is, mm...
April thirty, May third.
April?
Thirty.
April thirtieth.
Not sprint?
Yeah, spring.
Oh, that's what it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, spring though. Thank you, Mr. Hefield. Okay. Requesting a motion to approve this travel. Um, requesting a motion.
So moved.
Motion is made by Dr. Schumate. Requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Dr. Labott, now, is this one, another one of the conferences for the Innovative, Innovation District or...
Yeah, well, it's just, it's part of something I was invited to. It's probably, probably twenty of the top superintendents in the country. We go and really talk about, um, different, uh, ideas. But yeah, it's part of the innovative schools.
So, that being, that being said, we'll be able to draw a straight line from the conference to student achievement here.
Yeah, list, we, I always send stuff, I do it during the conference, generally. Things that we work on bring back to the district, so yeah.
And the cost is zero?
Zero, they pay for everything.
Okay, so you basically were invited up?
Yeah, yeah, I was invited.
Any other discussion? All right. Um, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. I don't mean to go so fast, people, but, uh, shoot, is that it? All right, I'm gonna look at this now, cause I'm losing my place with this. Okay. Yeah, Dr. Schumate told me, I said, uh, ten, I gave you ten o'clock, cause I knew Dr. Dito was gonna be long.
Ooh.
Uh, just teasing. It's good to have a joke, so we can wake up.
Right, that's right.
You sure did. You sure did. Oh, man, let me find my eyesight real quick, y'all. Okay, now I'm at number six. The, uh, ESA Coordinator Extended Support. Uh, Requesting a Motion to Approve our ESA Coordinator. I believe that's Dr. Page, has been doing that. Requesting a motion for approval. So moved. The motion is made by Ms. Young. Uh, I'll make the second, all in fav, uh, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. All right, moving on to number seven. And I'm gonna try to put some of these together. All right, thank you. Number seven, number seven, which is, uh, CHS Overnight Field Trip. Number eight, Summer Feeding Program. Number nine, Summer Feeding Sites. Number ten, Child Find Flyer. And number eleven, which is the Excellence Group Memorandum of Agreement, MO, MOA. There was that a stone. Renewal. Thirteen would be the, uh-oh, that's the application. And number fourteen, Kids First Proposal. And Pressure Washing. Wow. Whoa. Glad to read that. Pressure Washing, uh, is number fifteen. Uh, Requesting a Motion to Approve These Items, Board.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young. Requesting a second. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion?
Yes. On one of the contracts, let me see, I think it's number eleven. Yes, there is no ending, start and end. Do we have? Yeah. Do you kinda have a timeline, so to speak? What do you think it's gonna be, or?
So Holly, so if it's gonna extend beyond the end of the year, uh, fiscal year, you're gonna... But, but you, but if it's, like, it's gonna keep on going for another semester or whatever, you're gonna bring it back to redo, to do a new contract?
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think Ms. Young's had a concern about just being completely open-ended and not having any ending date.
You wanna make that amendment, the ending?
Yes. Yes, yes. Um, so, so can we still take them?
Ms. Young modified her motion to approve those items with the number eleven having an ending date.
On nine-thirtieth, yes. Okay. Oh, uh, discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. We the...
I got you spatham again.
It is unanimous. Okay. Yeah, we getting there. I'm getting there, you all, you know. All right, young, no doubt. All I got to do is see pressure washing and move on. You know, we have dates to remember. I'm happy about that. Um, Dates to Remember would be, uh, the Academic Good Friday and, uh, they say School Holiday. You know, we used to have Easter Monday, is that included in there?
Yes.
And the progress reports?
Not for twelve months, but...
High school graduation, uh, is coming up, but we have our class night too, right? Didn't we get something for class night?
Did y'all get dates?
All right, the Thursday? May the...
I think it's May nineteenth.
Oh. What time?
Y'all got the dates?
Yeah, I think it's Thursday, I think it's the nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken.
May nineteenth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is, uh, class night? Okay, I'm sorry, can someone give me the time, please? Six in the evening. I can, I could probably make that.
Ten AM on the football field, because the hump is being renovated.
Cox got served that day. Six o'clock. Okay. And then the students' last day, ooh, the year is ending. Sixty percent days, teacher last day, Memorial Day. Athletic, uh, report. You know, I must say that Mr. Davis has done a, a very good job. Thank you all for, so much for supporting, supporting him. And he, he basically, the, uh, input that he gives us every week is, is outstanding. I don't see how he write all the kid names in there and exactly what they did, but he does it. Just good. Now we'll move on to our board meetings that we have coming up, May fourth and May ninth. May fourth is the review meeting, May ninth is our regular meeting. And now we are at number thirteen. Election of Our Columbus Municipal School Board Officers for this upcoming school year. I'm requesting a motion for the Board President, please.
I would like to motion that Ms. Cox, you retain your position as Board President.
I have a second.
One more year on the board. Going out. Okay. Uh, The Motion Has Been Made by Mrs. Young. Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
We're praying for you.
Right. V is, um, Requesting a Motion for the Vice President of the School Board.
I move that Ms., um, Young.
Okay, The Motion Is Made for Ms. Talisa Young to Remain Vice President. Requesting a second. Second by, uh, Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Okay. Oh, he'd be scared for the first one. He'd be scared for the first one. He, that's him. A Requesting a Motion for Our Board Secretary.
I move that Dr. Schumate remain Board Secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
All right, The Motion Is Made for Dr. Schumate to Remain as the Secretary.
Again.
Requested by, boy, I wrote Dr. Schumate's name. Mr. Sparks has made the motion. I'll make the second. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you all.
Oh, you got it. Yeah. And I gotta go to the bathroom.
Oh, I was getting ready to run, wasn't I? All right. Requesting a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks. Second by Dr. Brown. She read. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. All right, thank you all.